Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll start off with public participation. No need to read the information there. Tom Reiner would like to talk about the budget hearing.
Good evening. My name is Tom Reiner. I live at 3220 Rocky Hill Drive. Got two comments like folks. First and foremost, I thought my compliments to both staff and department, departments for presenting such professional and thorough budget reviews. It really gave me some confidence that there is stewardship of those funds. Now, I know there were things, new initiatives were being initiated, and they cost money, but the balance, I think, was was very well done. So tip of the hat. Second, there were a couple of comments made that I think could be related. One was the issue of black mold in a couple of fire stations. And the second was a comment on the use of space. Now, to support that threat of effective utilization of our spaces, I'd like to focus on the best and highest and best use of this building, review the viability and safety of the police and administrative offices, and consider future needs, considering we've got 300-acre development on our plates that may cause us to expand planning staff, security staff, fire staff, and that sort of thing. I know there are many demands on your on the budget because of things like stretchers that are extremely expensive, block cameras that were expensive, dispatch, so there are more than a few issues. But I think the best use of our space may be one of the things that like the trustees to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Appreciate the kind words as well. Procedural actions. Move for the adoption of motion number 24-161 to dispense with reading of the minutes of the November 7th, 2024 regular meeting, November 19th, 2024 special meeting, and the November 20th, 2024 work session. Need a second?
You have one.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Move for the adoption of motion number 24-162 to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2024 regular meeting. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Move for the adoption of motion number 24-163 to approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2024 special meeting. Need a second?
Got one.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Move for the adoption of motion number 24-164 to approve the minutes of the November 20th, 2024 work session. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Department reports. Fiscal Officer Billy Joyce Smith.
Thank you very much. I want to say, I wanted to thank Mr. Reiner for his attendance at the budget hearings. In my short time in tenure with the township, I've never seen anyone attend. So kudos to being an invested member of our community.
That's interesting. I really love it.
And thank you for your comments. They're very interesting.
Well, prepared.
As for me, I just want to, I'm going to be taking another little quick trip, leaving Sunday. I should be back Wednesday. So my office hours next week will be Thursday and Friday of next week. And I just wanted to kind of put it out there that I'm going to be looking at implement or implementing and processing the holiday pay. Typically, that doesn't impact the fire too much or road as far as using time between now and the end of the year. But I will say to Chief Gerhart, if he and the lieutenant could kind of take a sneak peek ahead and see who's going to be using what, and if you can give me a definitive, I can give you a report tomorrow that will let you know who's got what. And if anybody's planning on using holiday time between now and the end of the year, I'll just deduct that in. I'll get that processed as soon as I humanly can. Moving on with my report for the evening, I have before you for your review and and signature are the certification of purchase orders and checks written since the last meeting. I also have for you to review and to review and take gander at the November receipt report. There's nothing too terribly interesting about those receipts on there, but they're there for you to review. I also have the management reports ending November of 2024. There's a revenue summary and a fund summary. If everybody could quickly look at the revenue summary at the first page. You're going to see, I apologize, not the first page. It's going to be second page under the Police District. There's a property tax, property tax and local tax line of 810,000. And if you scroll down a few, there's one called Intergovernmental. And what that is, 362,000. What that line is typically is property tax rollback. For some reason, when we did the amended certificate, bringing in the new 1.5 mil police levy, don't know if I got excited that we were having another 330 or 20-some-thousand on that line item, but I put it on the property tax rollback line instead of up on the property tax line. I talked to my rep with Local Government Services yesterday, and he's like, I understand what you, because I sent him the report and showed him that I wanted to move like 330,000 off of the Intergovernmental line and put it on the property tax line. So that, because if you go across and you look, it looks like we collected 156% more and that we've only really collected like 9.8%. We really collected about $26,000. So I mean, it's it's what we should have collected, but I need to, it's just going to be a correction internally in the, on the, this revenue report. But I just want to point it out now. He said that it did not take legislative action from the board to correct it. I just needed to make notes. And then I will stick that in my 2024 budget folder. And when it gets audited, if it should come up, at least they know I fat fingered, put it on the wrong line item. I found it. I corrected it. I moved on. And we're, everything is really okay. It's just, I wanted to point that out in case some people, I thought, wow, we really did not get anywhere near the budgeted amount for that. So that's all that is. It's just an error and a bookkeeping issue. Moving on, there's the revenue summary, then there's the fund summary. And then coming around for you to review and to sign would be the appropriation supplemental report. I can find it. And I've got a sick note where you need to to sign on that page. There's also the appropriation summary as of November 30th. And then also coming around for you to review and to sign is the November bank reconciliation and the first financial credit card adaptation for October of 2024. So nothing is too terribly exciting on any of these reports. The good news is, once I make that one small revenue adjustment, things are looking good and holding tight for the end of the year. That's all I have for you this evening.
So that I'm clear on what you were talking about initially with that little bookkeeping?
On the revenue summary?
Was that 326 out and 362 in?
No, it's going to be the same amount. I think it actually comes out to be like 333,500 off of the Intergovernmental line and 333,500 onto the property tax line. The property tax line should be more like a million 170 at the end of the day or something like that. And so it's just going to be a wash. It's a zero net adjustment.
Okay.
And I just have to figure out how to do it in U.A. and because it's fidgety. And it may not be that I may not be able to correct it, and I may just have to keep my report with the notes of what I did, basically keep a summary, like a narration.
Okay.
Because two years from now, they're going to ask me why, and I'm going to say, I don't know.
Yeah.
So that's why I always keep pretty, pretty propious notes in my book.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. The good news is we got all the money.
Anything else, anybody? Purpose approval to pay the bills. Move for the adoption of motion number 24-165 to pay bills as presented through the fiscal officer certification of purchase orders. Need a second?
You got one.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Administration Department, Lori Kyle.
Good evening. Tonight I have a few property updates for the board. The first one is the burn structure on Robin Avenue, just to make the board aware that there is a case management conference hearings for January 9th of next year. And I have been summoned to attend that. Hopefully, it will begin to move this process on quickly that we can have the authority to have that structure demolished. And as you recall, the land bank has a program that should reimburse the township for the cost of that demolition. The next property to give you an update on is the red building on Cincinnati Brookville Road. The means to be able to have a building declared insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective are pretty well defined within the Ohio Revised Code. And we have not been able to fulfill the requirements to have that structure deemed unfit for human habitation. So unfortunately, there's really no means for the township to move forward to require the property owner to address that structure. It doesn't meet any of our nuisance code violations that the township can move forward on either. So sadly, there's, there's no means to address requesting the property owner to work on that property. There's four properties that have been forwarded to Butler County for their zoning violations. Each one of them have already been forwarded, well, three of them have been forwarded out of the zoning department onto the Butler County Prosecutor's Office for further attention. The one remaining with the Butler County zoning, the property owner has requested an extension due to a health issue, and they have been granted that extension.
Can we talk about a couple of those?
Sure.
Before we get too far down the line?
Yes.
I have nothing for car, either of the ones on Cardinal. The ones, the one at 2221 Timberman, I got an email from the prosecutor's office that says the prosecutor's office reviewed the photographs that we had sent and obtained updated photos from the zoning department. However, based on these photographs, our, our office has determined that there is insufficient evidence to file complaint in this matter. The main reason is because the vehicles on the property do not plainly and obviously appear to be inoperable. To prove operability, I don't have the rest of the email. It tells us what to do. So I sent the office a, an email that said, please see the attached document for the Ohio Secretary of State. I believe this document indicates that the Ohio Secretary of State believes there's being a business operated here, which is a state of Ohio certificate with the owner's name being Rue's Automotive. It has articles of organization with it, and it has that address on it that Mr. Rue, R-U-H-E or Rue, is a statutory agent for Rue or Rue's Automotive. And I said, that combined with the pictures that your office has already been given should be more than enough evidence to prove that an automotive business is being operated here. Please let me know how you want to proceed or if I should contact the Attorney General's Office and have them run down the hall and talk to the Secretary of State because they think there's a business there. So he's going to get back with me.
So he's mentioned about being inoperable? Well, if you're there for repair, they don't have to be inoperable. He does repairing them. That doesn't make any sense.
Perhaps, but they're, they would have to get a, can't remember what he said, you have to get, in order to investigate, to go on the property and investigate. And it seemed that maybe they weren't willing to do that. But I think they're now probably willing to change their mind. I don't know how they can't really. But that's what's going on at Timberman. And that's as of 12, 12 o'clock today, when I sent them that email. And or their response to my email that I sent back to them this morning at 6:30. Pardon me, 3299 Cincinnati Brookville. They did say they were given a one-year extension. I objected to that just lightly. It wasn't a hard objection. But this, from what I understand from, I think Keith, that this is not the first time, this has been an ongoing thing for them. I'm not suggesting that there's not a medical issue there, but 12, 12 months seems to be a long time. And the vehicles just need to be hauled off. I mean, I don't expect them to go out and push them off there. So I objected a little bit to that, but not real hard. That's where that stands. So we may get some more information back from them about that.
What's the response to that? If the township didn't care for this extension, then it was up to us to deal with it?
No.
Oh.
They are looking at it further.
Okay.
He took it under advisement, basically.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's all I have for those. Let them all slip down the line. Carry on. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Also, for the board in your packet is information on selecting people to serve on the OTARMA Board of Directors. There's four candidates, and OTARMA is asking the township to respond with at least two. So if each trustee would let me know their votes, I will compile and submit the top two vote getters to OTARMA for their board election. I'd also like to inform the board, I have been asked to continue serving on the Butler County TID Board. The City of Hamilton has three seats, and they have offered Ross Township to sit on that board in one of their seats. And I, I did agree to that with the board's approval. I was going to announce that I was experiencing difficulties with the marquee. The good news is, the power interruption today has reset the marquee, which has allowed it to be updated. However, once I have started the camera system for today's meeting, it has come evident that only this camera is working and not that one. So I'll work on that tomorrow, but today's meeting is being filmed.
You can move the table.
And you have a nuisances update in your packet? And for board consideration is the 2025 Ross Township Holiday Schedule for Approval. And that's all administration has to see.
Okay, Ren Avenue is going to be inspected after the first of the year?
Yes, I drove by it on Tuesday. There's considerable work has been done, but more should, it, it needs to continue. But they have done a lot.
Chief Gerhart, is that the house that was next to the one that had the issue?
It might have been. I have to go back and look at the exact address. Probably pretty close.
Got scared the life out of those poor people.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. See. Is now a good time to talk about some of the things you and I talked about earlier? Or should we do that in new business?
There's fine.
Okay. Earlier today, everyone knows we had a tree down on Leahy and Moeller, and it knocked out power in this general area and a lot of areas around town for a while. Our generator didn't come on automatically, the one up here. Paul and his team were good enough to come down here and manually start it. But I believe Lori has somebody coming out Tuesday to look at that. Are you guys aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Dave? Okay. And they are on a service contract, you told me, right?
Yes.
Is that something that everyone would believe to be in their test regimen to test that, to make sure that it automatically comes on?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I would think so. My question to them is how they missed it back then. I mean, I don't want to just let them skate by on something like that because that could have been a big problem. Yeah. And then the electrician that had, I guess, wired the building to be on the generator, there are some circuits in the building that aren't on that that need to be. So we should probably entertain a quote for that.
I spoke with him, and he is currently working on a job in Columbus. He lives in Okeechobah, so he said that once he's back off of that job, he'll come by here.
Okay. We should probably, I, do you know how many kilowatts that generator is, Paul?
No, I don't.
We should probably ask Buckeye if that generator is powerful enough to power everything. I mean, I can't imagine that it's under, I mean, as big as that thing is, it's got to be 50 kilowatts. One of my houses, 22. So it should be powerful enough to power everything here. There shouldn't be, oh, well, that's not on the, that's not on the, the generator's circuit, you know, if something goes down. Everything should be on it, in my estimate.
When it was.
They can handle the load.
Yeah.
When it was moved here, there was conversation about what really needs to be on here. Obviously, we forgot a few things.
Okay.
The garage doors.
Yeah.
But there was conversation about it can't, about not including everything. I don't remember if it was due to the size of the generator or what prompted selection as opposed to entirety.
Is there any other question you guys can think of that she should?
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure in that matter, it may be just the way this building is set up. There are at least four to five electrical panels due to different add-ons throughout time. I did a minor repair in the property room last year, and I couldn't find the breaker box to shut that down. I had to do a light fixture and wire that in hot. So I couldn't find a way to kill the power, not get up there and, and do that. So again, originally, there may have been that they just elected to run air conditioning units, furnace in the front half of this building and probably not a lot in the back.
Well, and I've asked before that we kind of do a schematic that if somebody comes in and says, where's this, you know, a technician comes in and says, where's this located? Sometimes we have to play a nice game of, well, there's stuff here, there's stuff here. We really don't have a master plan of this building drawn out, like where everything is. And for example, having written, written instructions on how to generally start, manually start the generator should be laminated and hanging back by it in case one of us, if Paul's not able to get here.
Yeah.
You know, and he was fortunate enough to help today. That's awesome. But we should be able to be self-sufficient. So we have some things that we need to, should, we need to map it out, and we need to even just put Xs on it. This is where the breakers are, and, and he has corrected. It's hard to find all the.
Well, exactly. That's why I couldn't reset the marquee. There's some funky little box up in one of those ceiling tiles that usually, if you unplug it and wait and plug it back in, it does whatever needs to happen. But this time it wasn't. And so Paul said, well, we'll come and try to find a breaker. Well, then they had an unexpected huge project that needed to be tended to. So we were hoping to have a hunt for a breaker that controlled the marquee, but then we didn't need to.
So when you talk about having a schematic, do you want a, like, a 20 by 16?
A, just a drawing, and it can be a rudimentary drawing that just shows you the building. No, and then just, you know, here is the chief's office, and here's the meeting room, and there's a breaker box in my office, there's a breaker box back outside.
Are they labeled?
Dear headroom.
Are the breakers labeled?
Right, no. And some of them are, and some of them are labeled to what was germane to the Treger Building and Treger Automotive. Not necessarily, it's not actually saying Police Chief's Office. It might say Maintenance. I, I mean, who, who knows what they say? But we probably need to just take ownership.
I agree.
And do.
So, so maybe the electrician can help provide that. And what about the generators at 101 and 102, Chris? Are they, are you okay with the way those are operating?
We, we run them, they come on automatically every Wednesday.
Yeah.
And the crews do a, a weekly check on them as well.
Okay. I don't know if this one, does anybody know if this one does it? Does this do a weekly?
It's supposed to.
Okay.
You know, it's.
Another thing to put on the list for Buckeye.
You wouldn't hear it.
Right.
Okay. We get that fixed. I, when I talked to Sergeant Little this morning, he explained to me what they had to do to get the doors open. And if one of the officers who's not as adept as he is tries to get that open and it costs him five minutes to get out, we don't want that.
It'd probably take me an hour, so.
Well.
I didn't even come here today to park in law, so. I will certainly, if someone can tell me when that thing goes off, make sure it's checked every single week that it's running because it should go off.
It's just important that I be able to go, that's connected to the, the generator circuit, whatever all that is. Okay. All right. I don't know if I can be there Tuesday.
Okay.
Or not. I'll try, but.
If you, I can reschedule it if you prefer.
Wednesday, Fridays are usually better if either Trustee Young or Trustee Bellower can be there, but it just might be that good that we're there, somebody there if we can to sort of run through it.
Okay.
For me, typically a Friday's the one day that's good. Wednesday can be, although this week it wasn't. Okay. Anything else?
The one caveat, we also found out that if we don't have internet, the phones are an issue. Trustee McGurran had brought this to my attention months ago, and I thought that I had the system set up to accommodate that, but apparently not. So I'm expecting a phone call tomorrow from the company that assists us with our phones to schedule an appointment to meet with myself and Michaela to talk about what the phones need to do when the internet is out.
Okay. Let us know on all, all of those utility type things.
All right.
Thank you. Move for the adoption of resolution number 2024-064, establishing the 2025 Ross Township Holiday Schedule. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Fire Department Chief Chris Johns.
I have a couple of items for the board tonight. The first ones are monthly fire EMS, incident report, had 128 calls for service, 54 EMS and 74 fire calls. EMS, incident report, had 128 calls for service, 54 EMS and 74 fire calls. 20 inspections were completed by our fire inspector, 15 new ones, and there were five re-inspections. And he has 13 scheduled for this month so far. Only other item I want to bring up to the board is consideration for legislation to amend the personnel policies. We'd like to add a chaplain job description under the fire department. I provided Administrator Kyle a copy of that job description.
We each have a copy of that or is Lori the one that has that?
It's on the resolution. It's in exhibit for the resolution.
This is a volunteer-
This is a volunteer position.
I'm, I see the resolution, but we don't have a copy. If he said he sent you a copy, the chief sent you a copy of the, the new policy, I, I don't have, I know I don't have that to read to be able to vote either way.
Plus, it should have been in a attachment when I sent out the agenda. Did you get a, that resolution should have been attached. I can certainly make each of you a copy.
Been in, this evening's pocket in front of me?
Uh, no. Typically, when I send out the agenda for the meetings, all the resolutions, I send those out as well. I usually don't provide individual copies of the resolutions.
Okay.
The job description.
It's my part that I was working, working on that questionnaire and not making head much head weight. And I did not, I did not see that resolution.
It's coming around. Trustee Young is looking at it.
Apologize, I should have provided copies in our, my, uh, run report for the month.
This is a resolution to create the position only. This point?
Yes.
That someone in your view that would be local to Ross Township or Hamilton?
I've already made contact with Pastor White of Christian Church and we've had some conversation.
I asked Chief Johnson if actually putting someone in the position could wait till the first of the year. That way the position would be included on the staffing structure and pay rate.
And it's a volunteer, volunteer position.
Okay. Would that person be available to the police department if there's such a, or would you be interested in sharing?
As soon as I saw that, I'd be like, it's a great idea. We, I had it before and I, I was actually going to reach out to you afterwards and go.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We need to get back.
I'll sit down and have a conversation.
Okay.
For that. Chief Gerhardt's included in, on that. I'm sure that was, okay. I think it's a good idea. And the price is right.
If you're ready, you can go ahead and get that resolution.
Okay. Move for resolution number 2024, amending the Ross Township summary of personnel policies by adding section 700 dot 5 dot 9. Fire Department Chaplain Job Description. Would need a second?
Yeah.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Anything else, Chris?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Road Department Superintendent Bullock.
It's Russ. Um, just a couple of things. We want to add these, a sidewalk discussion to the next work session in January. Um, we need, we need a policy to come up with, you know, if we have an issue to take care of, how it's inspected, how it's fixed, how we assess the property, the property owner. And we don't really have anything on paper for that right now. So I, I will attend that meeting to help and get, get something started on having a policy for the sidewalk.
It's a work session meeting.
In January, yeah. And the other thing we had, uh, excuse me, Southwest Water had a water leak on Timberman Road that leaked for at least five or six days. And it ended up washing out underneath the road and washing out, it's on a, the crest of a hill there. So it washed out the, the support on the other side of the road. We basically had a little mini landslide and everything went away from the road that supported it. It was about a five-foot straight drop off from the white line. Everything kind of drifted away down into the, the ditch about 15, 20 feet deep. So we had, uh, we had to shore it back up with large stone and, and riprap and, and we ended up incurring $4,200 just in material to fix that.
How many man-hours were in on that?
I didn't figure that, Russ, but, uh, I'm gonna say eight to 10.
Is this Southwest Waters line?
It is their line. They fit, they came out, I called them when I, when I saw the roadside. I called them, they came right out then. They knew about it then, but they didn't know it was a big issue. So the, their superintendent came out. He said he just found out the day before. I don't, I can't answer when they knew about it, how long they let it go or, you know, it, I don't know what you guys want to do. If you want to try to get them to pay for it.
Send them a bill.
You know, I told him, I told him we would probably be doing that, but I would discuss it with you guys. He wasn't real receptive to it, but you know.
That's something they would have normally come out. If you hadn't have done it, would they have come out to do it?
Fix the roadside?
Yeah.
No.
No. They would take care of the pipe, but the pipe caused a problem, which caused this to, this, you know, have the labor involved in material. So since your pipe caused the problem, I think they should be liable for the repair.
I agree with you. I mean, there was the guy that was in the hole fixing the pipe. He's like, this didn't cause that over there. Clearly, it's not a coincidence. And the water, you could see water laying, well, we, when we were dropping the big rock down in there, it would bring water up out of the ground and it was as clean as drinking water. You know, it wasn't-
muddy.
Yeah. It was, it was obvious that it had went under the road and washed it out.
Are pictures or video of that to?
I've got pictures of the, of everything. I, I tried to take a picture of the clear water and it really didn't show up. It's that clear, but yeah. Yeah, I do have pictures of this.
Good, good.
We may need to attend one of their board meetings.
Uh huh.
I'm not saying he argued and said, no, we're not, but he, you know, and I didn't know entity against entity, how, how we handled that kind of stuff. It's never happened in my knowledge.
Like everything else, you always deny, deny, deny.
Yeah.
They can prove it.
The only, I mean, they've got another leak on Timberman right now that's been leaking for four more, four or five days, but it runs right into the ditch and isn't causing a problem. And I, I don't know how they handle their business, what, you know, but.
They wait till it's a problem, a bigger problem, and then they say, oh, come fix it.
Yeah.
Kind of like that tree on Simpson Brookville. Kind of like that pole on Lay High. Good plan.
Right. Yeah, priorities for us and them are different. Yeah.
I think we should bill them for the man-hour too.
Not only that, but the mini excavator was used, which is that small trackhoe. That's also bill hours too, probably close to $65 an hour for that machine, if not more.
It's cheap.
Want me, you want me to bill them for everything?
Yes.
Let's, let's-
Let them fight it.
All right. I'll put a bill together and run it through email to you guys before I send it to them. Let me know what you think. That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul.
If you need that to look like a pretty invoice, you can give me all the details and I'll make it look like a pretty invoice.
Well, good, because I definitely cannot. So I'll do that. I'll also try to send you the pictures I have along with the-
Going out Timberman, when you pass that little, there's a little Metro Park place there on the left going out. Has it been up the hill?
No, this was right in front of the Brown Family Farm there. As soon as you turn left on Timberman, that first hump, it's right there. You can miss it now if you look at it because we build it up, you know, make sure we had good support and you'll see it. Actually, still have some cones out there.
That considered a permanent fix?
Waiting to see how it settles because it was so muddy when we dumped all that in there. I mean, we put six semi-loads of rock in it.
Ooh.
Because it was so low, so big, but, and then we put asphalt grindings on top of it to make it smooth if somebody was to get off the road. I really think that we're gonna have to wait through the winter to see how it freezes and thaws and settles. And then we'll top it with dirt and make it look good.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
Police Department Chief Gerhardt.
Thank you, sir. Monthly calls for service. We had, had 19 auto accidents, burglary, one burglary report, eight domestic disputes, two drug activity arrests, three mental EDPs, uh, two overdoses. We had one OVI that was actually a result of the Butler County OVI Task Force checkpoint that we did. So everybody with the exception of one person looked at all the news media. So unfortunate for them, but we had State Highway Patrol, officers from Fairfield Township, Butler County came out along with our officers. It was pouring, rained sideways, but it was a good job. We didn't have any fatalities that night. So that's, that's the main thing. At least everybody got home safe. One sex offense, we had 16 suspicious vehicle person calls, 207 other, other calls for self-initiated calls for the month, 214 business checks, 293 vacation checks, 26 extra patrols and 107 traffic stops. So very good month for our officers and proactivity. Uh, I already talked about the OVI checkpoint. We had some community engagements. I did meet with the Southwest liaison for the Office of Criminal Justice Services about grants. And actually today, just prior to the meeting, we were notified that we did get the provisional grant for body worn camera that I submitted to them. So even though I don't, can't write the policy yet because we don't get them until February, that's what the grant people look for. And I've already talked to the person over there that I don't anticipate any problems after their initial review. It's a lot to go through its stages, but that's a big part in the collaborative approving you for provisional for the grant. The other big community engagement that I was, am so excited about was our Krammer Cruiser. I thank everybody here on the board that came out. I love the competition between the board about who could get the most stuff. We did clear out all the shelves at IGA early. So, um, but we were able to, oh, we actually had to stop early because I was running out of cruisers to fill up. Uh, there were so many people that came out. We made the largest donation to do the food pantry ever for Ram, uh, Ross and Morgan Ministries. And they could not believe how much we took over there, along with almost $850 in gift cards and cash that people went in and said, we can't find anything. Can we just give you money? And I said, yes, sorry, IGA, but, um, but it was great. It was great. So next year, maybe I'll get a fire truck and fill that thing and just take it over there.
Do that.
So it, it was, it was good. And it, they had actually said they had just used a whole bunch of food for the Thanksgiving. So we were able to replenish and overstock. I told them to tell whoever came in the next day not to be mad at me, that they had a lot of work to do, but they, they brought us some goodies afterwards, some handmade treats and appreciation of it. So I was glad to partner with them and get back to the community. So I was asked at the Butler County Police Chiefs Association to be the secretary for this year. I think I was more voluntold to be the secretary for this year, but I've been appointed to that role to help out the president of the association and get what the, the other chiefs in the county and see whatever they need so that we can work together to get the job done and keep not only the township, but the entire community safe in this county. So I've had some conversations. Uh, Trustee Blower talked about our rear area there with Norse Tactical and keeping that area clean because it is, we are training a whole lot of tactical teams out here using our shoot house and that is a benefit for them to do. However, I expect them to be professionals and clean up after themselves. So we'll be making sure that that gets done and that it looks appropriate. Uh, I would like to do among my many things that I'm tasking people with, a clean out of our bay area. So I, I talked with Lori about this. We're going to get a resolution, look at what can be repurposed for other things throughout the township. I've talked to Paul and his crew about some things that they have in there that they would like to use because if we haven't touched it in 10 years, it needs to go on a pallet to GovDeals or to a dumpster somewhere so that we can start using that bay to make our cars look clean and professional when we're out there in the community.
Oh, the wash bay?
The wash bay.
Yes. On the other side.
Yes.
Class.
So.
Okay.
So that's one of my things that probably won't wait till the spring because I don't, I'm looking at it. Other than that, for legislation, there's a motion to hire, we talked about this in executive session before, about hiring someone as an instructor, an auxiliary officer. It's not going to cost us anything. We're going to hold his commission. Next year, I would like to do some of the trainings that are more appropriate for our people and get them OPADA approved ahead of time. Mr. Phillips is an instructor for Norse. He actually comes out here and teaches other departments. So I would like, at no cost to us, to be able to utilize that and get our people some hands-on training where I don't have to take them necessarily off the schedule and get them trained and get some more OPADA approved courses for CPTs for next year, which is going to be a win-win for us. And then police recruit, Max Von der Haard, we went and watched him actually crush all the competition in his fitness test. He is, he is a workout fiend and he has completed his police academy. So his state test is going to come up sometime this week. And as soon as it does, we're, you know, we will have an official swear-in ceremony with the board and everyone else coming in. But for purposes of getting him into the FTO program and starting his peace officer training, that may come at, on a Monday night, I get his certificate. So I would just like the board to, as soon as we get that certificate, be able to make him a part-time peace officer and start his training. And he's, he's already been riding with us. He is, uh, he is a gem that we found him and that he grew up in this community. He wants to be here and he's, he is eager, nipping at the bit to get out there and get started. We're just waiting on the state to tell him when his test will be, which could be Friday. He could take it Saturday. It's, it's kind of one of those things that they tell us and then they email it right away. So.
Very nice man.
Yes. He was at Krammer Cruiser, had him out talking to people for a, not even a, an officer yet. He is great with the public and, uh, he's very fast. So I will not be chasing anyone. He would be the designated chaser from here on out. But he's really, really like just a great find and, and loves this community and wants to be here. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. I, I just, just want to give you a couple of things here. The 261 calls for service, those are calls that come in to the department. I don't want to underestimate or undervalue to the people of Ross Township how important the self-initiated calls are. 640 of those, that's 20, a little over 20 a day of what I would call positive police work. And I appreciate you, you doing that and creating that presence that's in the community that, that we're here to help and here to serve, that your, your department is. And, and I thank you for that. Also, thank you for getting that Krammer Cruiser event ready. That, that's really a, a great thing. I appreciate it. As well as the, uh, doing what you did for, to get the grant for the cameras. I think those have been a long time coming. Very grateful that you did that and, and got the-
Thank you.
-the grant to approve or, um- the, the grant to approve, or, you know, to help with the funds for that. You were talking about keeping the cruisers clean, maybe some of the stuff we sell on Govdeals deals back there could fund a power washer, to power wash them from inside maybe, or something like that, when it's cold out.
Absolutely.
All right, purpose. Hire auxiliary officer Ricky Phillips and promote police recruit Max Von der Har to part-time officer. Move for the adoption of motion number 24-166 to hire Ricky Phillips into the position of auxiliary police officer, subject to the completion of a background check and promote police recruit Max Von der Har to part-time police officer with a starting salary of $27.04 per hour upon successfully passing his required state certification test and receiving his Ohio Police Officer Certification. These employments are in accordance with the current staffing summary and pay rate resolution. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Township business, any old business? From the administration? None from the administration? Anything from the board? New business, anything from the administration? Anything from the board?
I have an item. You just heard the police chief talk about the Norris Tactical area, the restroom out in the bay, which was, of course, we all know, it was a mechanic's basic locker room. The facilities back there, the toilet itself is, it's got to go, it's, it's very.
Crude.
Yeah, it's embarrassing for those that travel from big time agencies to come here and train and, and have to go in there. Two, two, two small things, and I can start taking care of one, both of them hopefully. There's a, there's an old window, and you can see out into the bay from that restroom, I can fill that in with a piece of plywood or some kind of coated board from Lowe's. I can also get, remove that toilet, because I've done, like, all, that's probably numerous remodelings at our house. So I'd, I'd like to replace that, that toilet with chair height, elongate it from Lowe's. I haven't bought one, remodeled a bathroom in quite a few years, but I know I can attack that project and save a few bucks. The next thing is the flange coming out of, coming out of the concrete. There's a good possibility that flange will be rotten and won't be able to adhere a new toilet to it, most probably due to the age of this building, they're going to go into the ground, and it's going to be cast iron versus PVC. That's going to require a plumber to jackhammer some of that concrete out and put a new, new elbow in it, and then a rubber sleeve to connect to the cast iron to PVC. That, that's most probably the scenario that's going to happen after, I, I'll bet that flange is just rotting.
They have adapters to go plastic PVC for a flange.
Yeah.
And you have a rubber boot that slides down inside the cast iron.
I may have to look that one up on YouTube.
If you need help with that, could we appropriate some money, and if you're willing to do it, I'll help you, we'll frame it in, make it look nice, do some drywall, I'm handy with that.
It is, it is block and paint it.
Let's get some better block, let's put some.
We can, we can pass that, we can pass that off as we go along. And reaching this plateau, I come to find out from our fiscal officer that our preferred plumber, Bill Miller, had retired, and the next thing I thought of, I found out at the Lions Club Hog Roast that he retired. So a third gentleman that I know that lives in the township is, is John Garcia, JG Plumbing on Cincinnati Brookville Road, so talked to him on Facebook, and he said he'd be willing to be, be the township plumber, he does work for Morgan Township. So I stopped by his house and picked up some business card, passed it down, so.
Can you get a W9 from him so I have him set up with a vendor?
I'll, I'll write a note.
Never mind, I'll just read, I didn't see the cards here, I'll just get that.
Yes, again, Mr. Miller and, and Mr. Dave Brewer, they have both done work for me at my residence, I have never had to use Mr. Garcia, but I, I see lots of thumbs up with, he does work around the township for different residents, that he must do a good job, so that's, that's the only other gentleman I know in the township that is a tradesman.
So do we require them to get a COI also?
Uh.
To work on township property?
I don't know that we, it's required.
Certificate of insurance?
Yes, I have a spreadsheet that I keep track of that at workers' comp.
You're our favorite plumber, so.
I can, I know enough to be dangerous.
I've, I've got a hammer drill that'll easily, a hammer drill with a, with a jackhammer bit.
Okay.
If, if, if that helps get that.
This, this could be an all-hands-on that project.
You know, I don't.
I would like to see, make it a little bit natural back here, I'm willing to lay tile on the floor.
I don't, I don't have those type of skills.
Oh, I do.
Good for you. I'll, I'll hand you what you need.
Well, now I have a favorite plumber and a favorite tile man.
Okay, well, great, that sounds like we'll move right along with updating and taking the embarrassment away from that facility of Palouse.
Thank you.
If we're going to do that on a, you know, weekend, Saturday morning or whatever, let me know, I'll bring that tool home.
Yeah, weekend.
Because we use it a lot.
I have no time during the week, but okay, great, all right, I'm, I'm good, I have nothing else.
What did I mess down here? So funny.
I'm embarrassed out into his.
Okay. Correspondents, anything from administration?
No.
Nothing more from the board? Topics for discussion for the December 19th, 2024 work session? Anybody have any topics that they'd like to have added to that agenda?
We'll have to approve the budget if that's the topic.
I have nothing else. Okay, executive session, move for the adoption of motion number 24-167 to retire to executive session to discuss the compensation of a public employee in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section 121 dot 22 G1. Anytime?
6:57.
Need a second?
You have one.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes. There will be no more legislation when we come back from executive session, we'll just vote to adjourn. Thank you.